Engineer and then following by.
Yeah.
Crazy thing that I'm supposed to understand.
Tell me you're a railroad engineer.
Okay.
All right, like to call tonight's meeting to order Town of Poppy Planning Board Meeting for April 18, 2022. If we could repeat that. April 18, 2022, if we could stand for the flagpole agents, please.
Oh, okay.
First day, welcome back from this break. Back to our board, John Sheehan has informed me he will not be in attendance tonight. So we can go down and just everybody quick introduce themselves.
Starting from here.
Yes.
Kevin Corson, live on Windy Hill Lane and on the planning board for a long time.
Ambargus, Blimber Pine Circle, and I've been on the starting eight years on the planning board.
Roy Smith, I live on Kelly Road just off Berlin. And I've been on the board for here, I think 18 years.
Mr. Smith, Chairman of the Board. Far too long on the board, maybe 25 plus years and we're just on the road over at 20.
Carl Ferencur, been on the board for probably, I don't know, 10 plus years. I live on Trillium Trail in Poppy Pines.
Deb Cook, I'm the newbie, live on Poppy Center Road.
Okay.
Jamie Sutford, Planning Board Attorney. John Dunkel, Planning Board Engineer.
I'm Diane Finnegan, the attorney for the applicant.
Okay.
My name is Dave Stringer, and I'm the developer of Mallard's Landing in Manlis.
Both of those are on our agenda this evening, so they are joining us via Zoom. Our last planning board meeting was March 21, 2022. Hope flavors had a chance to go back over the minutes. We have a motion to approve as presented.
Submoved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Mike Burrow, second by Kevin, any discussion hearing none, all in favor? Any post? Motion carries to accept the board minutes March 1st as presented. First on our agenda this evening, Hootnik subdivision. Sally Hootnik and attorney Diane Finnegan. So lot on Brickyard Falls Road parcel number 004 dot dash 01 dash 03 dot 1. And this is a preliminary review. And application has come in. Obviously, we've been working on this. There's been a couple subdivisions of lot line adjustment and now the first phase of subdivision. And we have new application for that. Sure, environmental assessment performance has been submitted. Pieces have been paid, your comments, there's maps that were submitted. Do you have any large permits with you?
No. I have a little one. Yeah.
Okay.
And D W Hannig was supposed to send two large maps over. I apologize if she has, if he hasn't done that. I apologize.
Yeah. We don't have them.
Diane, Bob is here.
Is he? Bob, do you have them?
No. Something else.
Wait, I do have one, but this is. Not roll.
Pardon me?
I said not roll. Not roll.
If I share my screen, can you guys see this?
Yes. Yes.
Same as we got.
Yes.
Is the screen large enough for you to see a larger version of the tiny map that you have?
Yes. What's the date, the last revised date of that, Diane?
I think it's 3/23 of this year. Let me look at the bottom. This is two, this is the last revised is 2/25, 2022 in the revision section. I think I got this in an email in March, but I think it says revised two lot subdivision 2/25.
I do have one that concurs with that date.
2/22 or 2/25?
2/25, 2022 revised lot subdivision is the last. It's right after Mitten Lot. In the revision section here at the bottom. This one has. This one has the Hammerhead roadway, it has proposed buildings in lot 1B and 20.71 acres up to the center line of the road for lot 2B. That should have come in in small with the package that was sent.
We do have it. I guess whether you Diane or Sally, somebody can start speaking about this now.
Okay. Everybody's aware that we've been working on this for quite, you know, a couple of years now. And it started out as a 29 acre parcel of land across from Brickyard Falls and across from the subdivision that Sally lives in. She's owned this property for almost 30 years. She's been trying to find a way to create kind of a residential studio for herself to work in. So that she has her, the other portion of her house that she's been using as a studio available for her children. Who are married and having children, they want to be able to stay there now and then. So she would like to build a studio on the land that she currently owns. It's, it's been a work in progress because we have had to deal with a very unusually conformed lot. There's only frontage on a town road of 250 feet and it's an agricultural district. So it only allows for, you know, one piece of property unless we extend the frontage by, by having an additional roadway put in. We tried over the course of the last two years to do an accessory structure, to do all kinds of things. But truthfully, you know, they were, they were not really acceptable. Or at least we didn't feel they were. We gave many options and the board really felt that the, the, the way to maybe move forward would be to create frontage by, by building a town road. And it's such a large parcel that I think would limit the ability of Sally to move forward with a sale if she couldn't subdivide it. She wants to have a portion of the property remain with her so she can go forward with a sort of a residential studio setup. It's across from her main residence, but not accessible from her main residence because the falls bisect the properties. She had a lot directly across from her main residence that was not a part of the 29 acre parcel. But we've since integrated that into this parcel. And then we sold off five acres to John Mitten, who changed his lot line to incorporate those acres in the back of this parcel to give himself a buffer and some access to the stream. That sales occurred. Now, at this point, Sally wants to create a five acre lot, which is conforming under the agricultural or farm district minimum lot sizes. And she wants to create a new lot for purposes of resale down the road. The individual that she is currently intending on selling it to is with you today. She, however, was advised by council that until there was a true subdivision, that it wasn't in her interests to go forward with an application, not knowing whether you would prove preliminary, preliminarily or otherwise, this subdivision. So what we, what we have proposed to you now is taking the remaining acreage, which is 26 acres, and subdividing it into a 20.71 acre lot and a 5.01 acre lot. Sally intends to have a, I keep calling it a residential building. And the reason I do that is because she intends to make sure that the well and septic fields are able to sustain a later residential building, even though she initially will only use it as a studio with a, you know, a toilet and a sink for her, maybe a kitchen sink for her painting. She does artwork and requires, because of the long time she's there and because of the paints and things she uses, you know, septic field and a sink in order to do her business. It's really a home studio, if you will, but it's a separate building. But we recognize the fact that as a planning board, you'll be concerned about future use. And so she's planning to make sure that going forward, she meets all specifications and necessities and site plan approval for a residential building in the event at some future time, if it becomes more than a, a studio with garage doors to get large pieces of work in and out, and it turns into a more of a residential structure down the road. He also has a daughter who's pregnant and a son who likes to visit. So who knows what the future brings? So really what we have before you now is a plan to subdivide what is now a 26 acre lot into a five acre and a almost 21 acre lot. Of all the proposals that we brought to the board, the tension because of the limited frontage and the fact that it's considered an agricultural or farm lot, we need 250 feet of frontage. And frankly, you know, Sue and others have said the only possibility would be to create a new road so that the frontage issue is conforming. So that's all I have. If anybody has questions, please let me know. Can I make this any bigger so that people can see more of what they're interested in or move it around a little?
This. Building for a. What is this? So, so the two buildings that are shown on lot 1B, those are proposed buildings?
No, one is to the right, closest to Brickyard Falls Road is the location of the proposed septic system.
Okay.
And then the one that is further back in the lot, that's more perpendicular to the roadway is a proposed, you know, barn with utilities, like a sink, counter and toilet. Again, it's a strange situation because as an artist that makes and, and sells to local hospitals and others, abstract art, some of her pieces are, you know, 25 feet tall, 20 feet tall, you know, and wide. And it's difficult for her to make pieces of that size without having a garage door to move them in and out of the structure. It's difficult. She has to often rent space and whatnot. So what she wants to do as she progresses in her career is have, you know, a separate, a studio separate from her current residence that allows for her to create larger works and, and move them in and out successfully. So the initial building isn't going to meet your accessory structure, you know, code, because even though she considers it a barn, it's not a part of her current lot. And frankly, you know, she needs a sink and she needs water and she needs septic. So it's not a house, but it's not a barn. It's, we call it whatever you want. I'm going to call it a residential studio.
Right. Well, that, that's the issue is if you call it a residential studio, then it has to meet all the requirements for a residence.
Sure, and it will.
When?
Well, at this point, it's, it's difficult for Sally to move forward, not knowing what, whether she can subdivide it, whether the road is appropriate. I mean, at this point.
So, so I think the issue is, right now, we're looking at a residential subdivision, two lots.
Three. Right.
Two. Well, the roads are road. So it's not going to be, it has to be a road. It can't be a lot. It has to be a road.
Dedicated to the Town of Poppy.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So, so that's the question. I mean, ultimately, if she, if it's, it's supposed to be a residential subdivision, it has to meet all the qualifications, whatever our codes guy says for a residence.
Right, but I don't understand why we would have the proposed septic and the proposed building on there if she's just doing a subdivision. That comes later on.
Well.
Because if we, if we accept this map, then we're saying we're accepting the septic and we're accepting the building.
No, no, but when it goes to county, the county's going to look and make sure that it's reasonable for septic. The signatures that happen at county. So that happens at county level. And right now, does it meet our requirements for some, for a residential subdivision is the question. So it's a, it's the bulk regulations and whether it's a reasonable full development of the land, right? The, the one thing that I see that's, that's a little, that you might want to look at is, I'm not really sure what's happening with that, this piece right below. And why. You know, it's a, it's a flat lot.
My, yeah, my initial thought, and I know you addressed it, Sally's saying that council advised prospective buyer not to give us any plans, but if that happened, that would answer that question of what's happening with the rest of it to conceptually make.
A decision.
Right, it's a weird, like how, like then can't, could that be lots? I don't know what the.
Well.
Well, I think you look.
If they build, okay, as the map is right now, and they've got this short stump right with the turnaround. If it was further developed, I'm envisioning that road would have to be extended. And yeah, somebody would have that included with their lot much, almost like Sally is proposing with her lot.
Yes.
But it's, it's a strange, it's a strange configuration because what is below the road doesn't look like it can be anything.
Yeah, you know, on my street where I live now, we have a circle and then there's two houses farther down in a private driveway. But they needed to have road frontage. They needed the 250 feet on Clearwater Circle. This is where I am, just across the falls. So there's two strips across the street from me.
I'm trying to show it to you on the big map that I have.
Frontage on Clearwater.
Mm-hmm. So.
It's the same.
It's, it's an R40 subdivision across, even though some of these homeowners have integrated part of the ag district to their. So for an example, lot one over here has 250 feet or whatever the proper frontage is on Clearwater Circle. And each of the one, two, three, four, five lots has the requisite frontage that is required.
They have this funky little, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the, the developer, it was necessary for him, I think it's 150 feet, but, because it's an R40 across the stream. But the point, the point is, is that same kind of thing could be done here. And if this is a town road and further subdivision down the road needed to be done to create four lots back here, the road could be extended and a circle put in so that the right frontage was available to each of the lots back here.
I, I'm just having a refollowing, having trouble with this strip that's below the road.
Correct. What, what is the dimension of that strip below the road? What is that dimension? Can't read it from here.
Okay, so at the roadway, it's 118 feet from the outer edge of the road to, to the lot line that's below it. And then it's quite a ways in, but you're talking about what could be here. And what could be here might not necessarily be residences. There's other land uses that that could be put to if this was extended and the proper amount of frontage was given to the 20 acres in the back.
A jazz?
I mean, people were talking about art parks, you know, where people put sculptures and people come view them. I, I, I don't know if that will ever.
Have to have a road and parking and all that.
Yeah. But I'm not sure what the person buying the 21 acres will do with that strip. It might be incorporated near the back in one of the lots and it might only be used screening or something for the roadway. I, I mean, that particular section is going to be next to a road and maybe it will be developed more in the line of screening or something else versus actual, you know, land use. It might be that one of the back lots could incorporate some of the lower part of the strip into a proper sized lot, you know? But.
The placement of the roadway is basically where that one driveway, egg driveway goes in and that's where.
Actually, no. And the highway superintendent was concerned that if the road was where the current access to the lot is, where the no trespassing sign and the, and the lock and the chain are, that the road would cause disturbance to the home directly across the street from it. So it's moved more center to the 250 feet in order to avoid traffic lights being shown into the road, the house across the street.
But that is the, the place where highway superintendent indicated that that would be the only suitable location for a roadway.
And here were, here were the problems. There's a, there's a stone wall right up against the 20 foot ingress and egress that you see above Hootnik Way. And it didn't give enough sight distance if you got closer to the stone road, stone wall. And then on the other side, the house appears on the lower side. And so if the roadway was moved toward where the current access is, car lights would, would go right into the living room of the person across the street. So that's the place that he felt was most appropriate for a roadway. And the truth is, guys, for all, the buyer will, will build their own home on this lot near the water and maybe not further develop it. I mean, that's, that's for the future. This is just to make Sally able to move forward with her plans. And, and conform with your rules related to frontage.
May I speak informally? Because I'm not on the docket today. And then it would answer some questions that you may have because I'm the buyer. Excellent. My name is, shall I stand? My name's Kasia Baranello and I. How's it sound, your name? It's C A S S I A. My last name is Baranello, B A R A N E L L O. And I live in Colorado and I'm a realtor in Colorado, licensed also in New York and in Wyoming. And this land, I have three young children, they're four, eight and 11. And this property, what I intend to do in it is live on it, but not yet. And build a house someday for myself. I'm not going to, I don't have the intentions to make a subdivision in it. However, I do have three kids and I would like to be able to survive, divide, eat that property eventually into three lots or four lots for each of my children. So that they may have access to that land. I have one child that's a farm school kid. He's eight. And that land has, I think, about eight or nine acres of farm land to it. Right now, I think the best use of that is farming it, even though it has not been farmed recently. I don't know. Have you farmed it recently? No. And so that lower part at the hammerhead, I feel like the best use of that would be there's, the farm goes down to the flat because that's a topo map. And so I'll walk up. Diane, will you just make it a little bit smaller so we can see the whole?
Sure.
The map so that we can see. So.
How's that?
Yeah, that's good. So this part right here is the flat portion to farm in. And I think the best use of that is to utilize this entrance road and then make perhaps, I don't know, put a barn or some type of place to store equipment in it and farm this land for now. And maybe eventually, I know there's requirements for the protest would be to put a house back here before it starts dropping down. And that's based on this road and these requirements. But really, I think for now, for the next, I don't know, my kid is eight, so 10 years will be 18. Next 10 years, figure out how to farm that or rent it out to maybe Farmer Greg. I hear there's a Farmer Greg out there that likes to farm. So that's the plan as we move forward. To answer some questions. It's a start. That's the dream at least.
You had a perk test done or anything on that, like where you're proposing the.
The, the land across.
Well, I can do it until I sell the land. So I'm waiting to sell the land. And when I have the money, I can start to plan the building. But until I know I can do that, I've been putting a lot of money into this. And I can't keep going forever without knowing.
Well, the, the perk test just tells you whether or not the land is suitable for, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a way around that if it's not.
Right. We have every reason to believe based on the lots across the falls and the homes around the area. And the type of vegetation, et cetera, that there will be a location within the five acres that will perk appropriately for septic. Um, it doesn't, i- it, it's not the type of, of loam and the type of ground that doesn't perk. Um, so it, we, we can't guarantee it will be in the location where we have the proposed septic system. But somewhere within this five acre lot, we're hopeful that there'll be a, an area that will perk appropriately. It, it, we don't view it as a, um, something that we should be so concerned about. Certainly, as you get closer to the stream, there's a lot of granite and other rock that would be difficult. But here, where there's a lot of field, mature trees, we feel it'll be something that will find a location that's appropriate.
Which is why I would leave the proposed site off the map, to be honest with you.
Okay, so that's what we're here for. So from a sketch plan perspective, you'd like to take the buildings off at the preliminary subdivision review?
I, I, that's just my opinion is that, you know, the argument could be made in the future that, no, this is where you said you were going to put it, why don't put it there?
Yeah, it does not need to be on there. I, I think for discussion purposes, it's fine. And if there was some reason where, why we wanted a building envelope, but this would not be that.
No, no.
Situation, but it's helpful for the discussion.
For the discussion, but the final maps for the subdivision, I would leave them off.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that will be done. They'll be taken off.
I guess my, what I, what I, I just want the, the board to look at. So I'm, it was very helpful to have this future developer here. So we have regulations, how big a lot must be. We discourage flag lots. We know that there was a, um, a big issue with, um, Mrs. Hoofnick, you know, getting road frontage. So she would need to build this road. That would be part of what she would need to do. Um, and the, the question about, is then the remaining lot suitable for the way that it's configured? So this is for this board to decide. I struggle a little bit with it. I might ask Mr. Bargabas, as you know, some of his building background, what you think about this kind of a configuration? And, you know, as a member of this board, is it, is it a reasonable development of this land? Or it, does it make more sense to have? Well, I guess it, it wouldn't make sense to have the road down further.
Why not?
Because I don't think there's enough frontage then for the remaining lot.
That would be a problem. That's why they.
That's why that is a cheat like that.
Well, it seems as though, you know, the road would meet the strict definition of a conforming lot. It has the frontage. I don't know, is the depth part of?
Well, we would have to make some kind of finding. It is, it would be a flag lot, you know, and that's discouraged. Um, but it's not. Evident.
It looks like a flag, but I'm not sure it meets the definition of flag lot because it has the requisite frontage. You know, I mean.
I think it's, um, I'll have to look it up, but I, it has to do with how much road frontage versus how much, you know, how much it extends in the back.
So that, I don't know. So, I mean, if it, if that's there, that would be, you know, helpful. Can't really make a decision.
It, 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 it's a flag.
It is a flag.
Yeah, it's a flag lot. There's just, it's depth and distance, yeah.
Right.
It's not a very square flag, but it's a flag.
Right, right. So, you know, do you think this is reasonable? And, and if it were to be developed into more lots in the future.
Two hundred, does that count for something? The two hundred is the, the length of the road? Is that what that is?
Mm-hmm. The current, the current, um.
That's what gets your, that's what gets her the two hundred feet of frontage.
Just for her location.
On this side.
Right, and that's for both lots, right, right, okay.
So unless there's a depth requirement, then she's meeting the strictest.
Yeah.
Yep.
Definitions of our code, making this a regular lot, not a flag lot.
Correct.
It's, it's strange, but in order for this, for lot nineteen to exist. Oh, one B, I mean, one B. I knew it was one B. I, I wrote it there. And it needs the appropriate frontage.
Right.
But you're saying it has with that road?
Right.
It's just got a squirrely beginning that there's really nothing you can do with it. It's not wide enough to build a house or.
So I know, but.
A row of cherry trees or something. I like cherry.
Or apple trees, for goodness sake. You know, I mean. There's use that they can be put to that don't involve buildings. So, and I think that the buyer is an agricultural minded person and a family minded person. And I, I don't, I think she understands the limitations of the lot, as Sally now does. Um, as a result, the small amount of frontage on Brickyard Falls Road. And I think the way for Sally to move forward with her desires to have, you know, there's, there's really not a lot we can do with this lot and because of the way it's configured. And e- either we leave it as it is and do nothing and, and that's a sadness. Or we figure out a way that we can conform to the requirements without a variance. And that's a very expensive road we're looking at. Um, so clearly Sally's had to consider whether she's willing to make that investment in order to move forward and apparently she does. And that's why she's here for your commentary so that she can do what she hopes to do. She's been, as she said, working on this for a long time and, and she's invested a lot in it so far, so.
So, so what, you know, what we look at is the future. So what potential issue could there be in the future if your eighteen-year-old or eight-year-old eighteen-years-old decides, I want out of here, I want to sell this for some, to somebody? What, what's the downside for that next purchase of that property? Is there a downside to that?
Okay, so a special road, um, that's going to serve both parcels. It's probably not a bad thing. I mean, the other thing that really hasn't been talked about is whether, um, a variance is a better option. It can be.
So can I build a driveway on that strip from the end of that road? I can build a driveway to the back there?
The way I see it, you would be able to, but for just your own house, they're only going to get one lot out of this.
Right, just for that house. Oh, yeah, see, that's the issue.
In order to divide it into more than one more lot, you need to extend the public road out past that.
Right, okay.
And a circle that allows for the frontage at the end of the road.
Makes it difficult for the.
In the future.
Breaking it up to more houses because there's not, so there's only frontage for one house.
Yeah.
At the moment.
Couldn't decide it again right now.
But in the, in the future, um, as they did with Clearwater Circle, um, even though these lots are very strange configurations, each of them has the requisite frontage. And, you know, that's, uh, if it would only be three lots in the future, if it were for the three children or four lots total in the future, there's no reason that a house could go on five acres here and two more houses could go on as long as the road extended to a circle that gave two hundred and fifty feet of frontage. And if this lot, this lot has all the frontage it needs, so really the circle would only require three more, you know, frontages on it. Because this lot, the bottom lot, would have it. And then if the circle was in the center.
Build the road now?
No, I might only do this, but I would show you, I would want preliminary planning of that lot.
Show a road with a circle at the end, right?
However many lots I want.
Yeah.
And I may only build this as a minimal, just to give that.
Right, but you'd want it to be on a plan.
Right.
So, so we're just trying to get our thoughts straight too. So if, if you were to do that and have multiple houses back there and you wanted to do it based on the circle, the road going all the way back in there, you're on the plan now.
Can I ask you a question?
But you see, this is where part of the problem is, some of you are concerned that you're approving something that might not occur because of, you know, whether the septic perks and where it's located. And if it's on the map and you're kind of preapproving it, and some of you are concerned that you, you want to see what's going to happen. And I get both sides of that, but from the developer's perspective, the farther we go down the road with approvals, it limits us in the future to what we can do. So we've learned over time that it's better to do things in stages. So that in the event, Kasia, for an example, decides she's going to farm half this land and just build one house. She's not foreclosed from doing that and limited to a circle at the end of the road. And if Sally decides that, you know, her daughter decides to move home and she wants to put a different kind of residence on it at the site plan phase, that's a different story too.
And I, I. Fine, if you want, if, if you want to do it the way it is and it meets and you can only put one house there, then, you know, you'd have to come back in front of this board in the future in hopes of being able to do it where you could have multiple houses. That's, and, and those things that you spoke in the beginning of, those, those are our jobs. That's what we're supposed to do. Planning is a long-term view of what's going to happen there. And that's what our job is, is.
I agree.
What happens when they all decide it's time to move?
Right, and I agree with you. And that.
Can I just step in for a minute though? I want just my five acres, right? I would like to sell the other lot to Kasia. However, if it doesn't work out, I will sell it as a single lot to somebody else. I just want to sell it.
Yeah.
And maybe it won't work out.
Yeah, I, I mean.
So I just want to get going and have a second lot.
A discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. We could say, you know, you've got the road there, you've got the frontage, sell the lot, both lots conform to that. You don't like the flag lot, but we can do it. And then in the future, when you decide you want to have three houses back there, you just have to come back to the fore of this.
Right, exactly.
And, uh, and look at it then, absolutely.
That's, that's all I want to do, right?
Yep, yep. But, you know, the world changes. I don't know, I've ever been to N C Y S studio, but he had, you know, huge, huge paintings. And he died.
I could die tomorrow.
Right. His last painting is still in there and.
Like, this is taking me so long, I'm afraid I'm going to die before it's done.
No, it's been a long time. But it's just because it's an odd one.
I know, it's totally odd. And I had no clue when I bought it that this would ever be such an issue.
Yeah.
But for now, I just would like to subdivide it into two lots and not overthink the future.
Yeah, so, so.
Yeah.
It conforms, if, if we don't mind the flag lot, it conforms.
After the road is built.
After the road is built, obviously, the road would have to be built, yeah.
Yeah, um, I usually ask everybody if they've done a perk test or not. And to me, that's standard, um, knowing that it hasn't been done, that, yeah, your septic could be in that place or it could be different. So I kind of, my gut feeling on that is to leave that off until, you know, for sure have those results.
Yeah.
Um, with this plan, it does meet the road frontage. The flag lot, yeah, we're they're frowned upon, but yet when I look at the entire map and look at what some of these other look like.
Right.
It was.
I mean, on my street, everybody planted trees along those strips. It's beautiful.
Odd shape to start with because of different things that have happened over the years.
Yes, yeah.
My gut feeling right now, it's the best thing that we could do at this point without doing variances. So, my two cents.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I like that we had the discussion about the fact that there is, there are possibilities in the future. I think that's great. I, I'm okay with the way it is, as, as drawn there, you know, with, with the road. And the future will be what it is. I, I know there's other properties that, uh, are similar in a sense where there's two lots. You know, people own two lots and one of them is really a flag lot, another they aren't. And, uh, so we do have a few in this, in this town.
Yeah, when I bought my house on Whitney Hill Lane, it had been divided into a flag lot in case somebody wanted to build a house behind my house. You know, I got two tax bills and I couldn't figure out why, and it's because they put that flag lot in there. And, uh, you know, it's in some way with it, but I, I get that and they're not against the law. But it's frowned upon, but anyway, um, so yes, it does meet, and I'm fine with that. I know you really have struggled for a long time to get this, this going and, and, uh, understand that it has to meet the zoning and, you know, when we first started talking about it, we were going to have a sink and then maybe a bed and then maybe a shower, you know, so it became more of a house than, than, you know.
I, maybe that might have been the.
Yeah.
I.
And that steered us in a direction that was hard to.
And I'm sorry if it was like that because for me, it's always just been a workspace.
Correct.
And, you know, yeah, I'd need to open up some more sleeping space in my main house. But that space, no, I don't think I'd want anyone sleeping there.
Yeah, but for conforming you, she wouldn't have to come back to this board.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Wanted to conform.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You have any comments, Scott?
Uh, this looks good to me. And, uh, like I said, for the future, whoever buys the back is going to have to end up with what kind of road goes to the back. Whether it's just a, keep it in a one lot and you dead-end the road into their driveway, house driveway. And if they're going to split it up, they'll, they'll have to do that later.
Yeah, just build a bigger road and turn around, sure.
Halt a sack in there and, uh, but for what, uh, she wants to do, this looks fine.
And, and since he's, you know, only eight years old, that's ten years from now, hopefully he'll be here.
Maybe you will be, so remember it. I know, well, you said he's almost eighteen and I find it always.
He got to be eight real quick, didn't he?
Yeah, he did.
So for purposes of our next meeting, to move forward to preliminary subdivision approval, I've heard that you don't currently want the two buildings on lot one be located and that you'd like, I imagine, some more information on the road that's being constructed and perk test. Other than that, for preliminary subdivision approval, is there any other change we can make that the, that the board is, you're considering this? Would like us to do?
Just to be clear, you could leave those on there. We are suggesting that it's probably not a good idea.
Okay, sure.
To you.
I got it.
We're not demanding that they come off.
Yeah, we don't want them on.
We. I'm going to take them off just so they don't bother anybody and that leaves us with a lot of options about where to place, uh, proper stuff.
The guy right here.
Whiteout.
You got that?
Okay, um, John, anything else?
Oh, yeah, just let me go through my list here. So you're, you're approving or potentially approving a two-lot subdivision with a parcel to be dedicated to the town of Pompey for future use as a high. So it's, I don't know if it's a three-lot subdivision or two.
Well, it's contiguous, it's contingent on building the road.
Right, right. So my next comment is that no building, if you approve this, that there should be no building permit issued until the road is constructed, approved by everyone. And that, that leads into the fact that we don't want to show any buildings on there. No, no indication that you're approving any type of structure on these lots until that road is completed and accepted. Because otherwise, it's a non-conforming lot. because otherwise, it's a non-conforming lot.
Right, and that will be a contingency and the approval will be that the road be built, so that don't happen until it's built.
And I might suggest another contingency of approval that no further subdivision can be done on that remaining lot until the road is completed.
Right.
Want to confirm that the town highway department has approved the location of the road. I know I heard the applicant state that there had been some discussion, but I think that should be on the record for this board before you approve even the location of that right of way. You want to make sure that the county highway superintendent has approved that as a, as an acceptable location for intertown road.
Is there a way? Go ahead.
Technical details, the hammerhead itself, that, that, uh, at the end of that right of, you're going to have a 60-foot right of way and then just the hammerhead to turn around, that becomes a temporary, um, kind of land use that could be surrendered back to the property owners. So, I don't know if that wants to be an easement or a parcel, or, or a permanent parcel right now, it doesn't have to be. That's something to think about. And then as I reviewed the E A F, there's, um, this, this property is located in an archaeological sensitive area. There are wetlands noted, there are floodplains noted, and there are potential threatened endangered species on the property noted. So, as you go through the secret form, you want to make sure you note and acknowledge all of those items. It doesn't necessarily mean it's a major significant environmental impact, but you want to make sure that, uh, it's noted as you go through the secret process.
I appreciate that information, and can you tell me, is it a bald eagle or something else, if the, uh-
If you go, if you go on the, the, uh, E A F mapper website, they will answer several of those questions for you.
Thank you, thanks. Okay.
On the Part 1 E A F, you want to acknowledge those four things.
Sure.
Sally, we'll have a break in the action, you know who N C Y is, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Do I ever, yeah?
Have you been to the studio?
No.
Just the way it was when he-
Yes.
But I, I've seen all the books on it.
Um, Purcell met with you on a location for roadway slash driveway and all that discussion. Did he hand you anything written?
We met at the site with a, with a rolling measure, and I was dead-set on convincing him that the road should go where the current entrance to the property is. And we debated it for a long time and measured and talked and measured and talked, and finally, he said there's only one location that is suitable, and the location that he gave me, we marked together and measured together, and then I provided that information to, um, Bob Porcello the day it happened, but I can, I don't know if he's moved away, retired, or if I can contact him, or, or what, what we or we can meet out there again with the new highway superintendent and do it all over. Frankly, Sally would prefer it not be where it is, but it is what he said, so I'm communicating that to you.
Long story short, though, he didn't type up a letter, or do you have a letter from him saying that?
Anything in writing from him is the short answer.
Okay.
Except what it says at the very bottom of that page that you said, and it says, "The highway superintendent met with the attorney for the applicant on site and determined there was only one location available to the proposed driveway in the future town road, and it's located exactly where he determined it to be."
That's right, that's all true. And I, if we got ahold of him, he would, he would remember, it was, it was a, it was a long debate. And it, it had to do with some limiting circumstances within the 250 feet that exist there, having to do with the stone wall, the north side, and a house across the street on Brickyard Falls. There you have it. So, how would you like me to proceed in that regard? Um, do you, should I contact the new highway superintendent, call the old one, you know? This is going to require a tree be taken down and the current access moved. It's going to be more expensive for Sally to do it where it is, but it, that's what he said, so, just being honest.
So, we should have a letter from, an official letter from the, uh, highway super, uh-
The current.
Current, yeah, current. And also, you know, the fire department should be, um, also talked to about it and get, get a letter from them saying, "Yeah, we're good with your, your turnaround," and it's going to serve them appropriately.
Okay.
And then, uh, then submit the preliminary, that, actually, the plan. It's, we're going to go straight to final plan, right? It's because it's a, it's just a two-lot subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, bring that in and we can call for the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Do whatever, you know, if you think that we're, we would be good enough to call for a public hearing at the next, for the next meeting, um, they probably can get everything in line. I know you don't call for a public hearing, sorry, but just, just kind of to get a timeline.
Sure, I mean, I would love to have this completed this summer. Um, I know everybody gets busy, and I'm still waiting for our engineer to provide, um, his, his engineered drawings for the, for the highway, um, so we can start hiring contractors and whatnot. There's no point in any of that until we get final subdivision approval, so.
Right, ultimately, the highway department, um, is going to have to prove everything. The town attorney's going to have to prove the, uh, the road dedication. There's going to be a number of, um, conditions on any approvals, so.
And we'd have to get some maps on a timely basis, so we can look at it. It was a little difficult looking at it tonight, but if we're going to move fast on it, we want to get-
Sure, I, as soon as I get all the adjustments done to this, I will make sure that you have, uh, full-size maps at the next meeting, and I apologize.
Prior to the next meeting.
Right, of course, I mean that, I mean that as well.
But I think before we do the public hearing, we should have the letters from the highway.
Right.
Right.
Fire department.
Absolutely.
We have those in hand before.
Right.
It goes on.
Not the day before, but plenty of time, get it on the, on the schedule.
Right.
That as well, then it may be the following month.
I, I would say that, given everything that you've, um, requested, it might be that I need to push it to the May, I mean, the, the June hearing, but if we had final subdivision approval uh, by June, that would, that would make my client really happy. Um, so, it, and giving you some lead time and getting the maps changed and getting the fire department and the highway superintendent and everybody, um, on board, as well as, um, getting our engineer to provide the roadway, um, report, which would take some time.
Do you know what our submission deadline is, so that could possibly be a public hearing in May, but then a decision in June?
Okay.
I, I- We could, yeah, we could leave it, we could have a public hearing, okay, but at least have the public hearing at the next meeting if, if you can meet the deadline, which is in a couple of weeks, I think.
Right, it would be the first-
And then our engineer has to look everything over.
Sure. Yeah, well, this is all very encouraging, and, um, now that I've been, um, waiting, now we're going to hurry up and get this done, I promised Sally, and I'm going to do what's necessary now that we have an idea that this is something that, that could be approved, get the show on the road.
You can ask Mr. Porcello if he thinks he can get them in in a couple of weeks.
I'm not worried about that.
All right.
I'm not worried about that.
I know.
Right, that saved a call. Well, it does, and, you know, it's, it's helpful, because, you know, he's heard this discussion, you know, it's like-
Although he forgot the maps tonight.
No. He had to do so many versions of this map. He probably was like, was there for the third rendition or the, yeah, he, he, he's busy, too. Um, we all are, but we need to get you what you need to make this right, so I'll be all over it. Yeah, we'll get what you need.
I'm doing a big piece of art, it takes a lot of revisions.
I don't think I've ever had a painting take that long.
Is there anything else we can tell the board? Mr. Stringer's been patiently waiting for this, through this debate. Anything else I need to know before we say goodbye? And, and, uh, I'll be in touch with you if it's okay, Jamie, unless you want me to call somebody else about, um, the list of necessaries other than what's been discussed here.
I think that, um, do you, do you want to send your, your comments separately?
Or, I think they're in a minute, but I don't know to extent. It's up to you, you want me to do one more?
No, I mean, I, what, what we need is just what, whatever is required for a preliminary subdivision map, submit it to Nikki at the town hall and get the map, um, put on the, the things that Mr. Buckle just talked about.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can look at it. Well, the seeker, the seeker, you're going to, you're going to fix the, that was, you know what? That was more to us when we go through the seeker.
Yeah.
But I think it would be helpful for, to have a summary of your comments, you know, so we have a, like a checklist.
Question for procedure here, the road has to be designed, and I, and myself and the town highway superintendent have to approve to design.
Right.
Do I want that done before you approve the preliminary subdivision? Or do you want to do it as a condition of approval that the subdivision isn't valid until the road has been constructed?
Do you think you'll have a problem with design?
I, Steve Calzareno's has been working on it, and he's had some-
Okay.
Never know.
He's been limited, he's been very busy himself, I know. Um, I told him a few weeks back that we hope to have his report for tonight's meeting, but I was initially thinking it would be for preliminary subdivision approval, but then we moved, because we we sold off some of the property and we wanted to start again at the sketch plan, which is all fair enough. I think I certainly will have it, um, for you, assuming Steve can, can do it. I know he needed some elevations that Bob provided to him a week or two ago, so I'm hoping he's almost done. And I don't think it would be-
If we make a contingent, Jamie, it, it's the burdens on them anyway. Nothing can happen until that happens.
Yeah, I mean, it might, in general, over ten, it might be a contingency.
So, do you want the, it's all, you want the design made and approved before you even have a public hearing?
I don't, I don't think before the public hearing, but I think we can still do the public hearing and then, or before the final subdivision. So, I mean, we're a couple of months off.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Keep it moving.
Yep.
If, well, we're essentially going to be approving a preliminary plan.
We're going to-
And that will give them vested rights.
I believe we're going to a, a final plan.
Because they'll have the drawing, they'll have the, uh, driveway approved by then.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because also they have to do it in this mode.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can't file your final plan or-
Until it is done, right.
Right, yeah, right.
Okay.
Timing of getting all the info back in here, which I'm, in my mind, if they want to be on through May, that everything's back in here by May 2nd, because they also would have to turn around and get a public hearing.
Right, that's, yes.
So, to me, that's kind of the, the trigger.
Time is flying by.
It is, so are you saying, if I have everything in there by May 2nd, assuming that I can get everything by that time that you could schedule the public hearing, but if not, then it would be pushed to the June date? And then it would be by, you know?
Might be two meetings, but it depends on how far along everything is.
Right. Okay. All right, all right. I will address all the issues that were raised tonight and get everything that the board has requested to you, including new maps, um, updated seeker, um, fire department approval, a letter from the highway superintendent, um, I'm going to have to schedule some kind of meeting out there um, to, to review the location of the road unless I can get Mr., can I, can I contact Mr. Rodriguez and see if he'll do the letter?
There is this, yes.
Mr. Rodriguez doesn't work here anymore.
I know, okay, I mean- Yeah. The current highway superintendent, then, I'll get a letter from him and have him maybe meet us at the site and, and see if he agrees with the location. I, I just want to make sure that the right place.
So, location and drainage management along the highway.
Right.
Driveway coverage and all those things are going to be needed, too.
Yes, um, Steve is working on all of that, but he's working on it based on this location. And so, I, it's kind of the chicken or the egg thing. I, I'm quite sure that whoever looks at it's going to have the same feeling, but one never knows, so.
And Jamie, put in there, I want to, um, maybe note to Nikki or whatever, make sure that this gets sent to E C C.
Can you send this to the county as well? Is that E C C?
Member of Fairmont Council Committee.
Thanks, nice meeting, guys. Thank you.
Good luck for the next 10 years.
Yeah, well, I know, I got it for life, right?
Thank you.
See you next month.
Good night.
They should be able to, a little full on, um, for the secret questions. Well, when, when, when this plan comes in, hopefully by May 2nd or thereabouts, then Nikki can send the whole thing in to everybody. We can still have a public hearing in May, we can keep it open or close it and not make a decision.
All the information is in there.
And, and John's going to deliver a, um, a comment letter.
Okay.
To the board.
So, do you expect any neighbors, like anybody up in arms about what you want to do? Just curious.
You never know.
Yeah. Marching up and down with signs right now, though, I think.
No, but, I mean, I've had, I've had some run-ins with hunters that border my land that-
Want to hunt on it.
They have been hunting on it for years and stressed when they asked them not to. So, there's, you know, there's fewer than others.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
Hopefully not. Let's see. I mean, they could hold it all up, right? I know.
They can come in and say their piece, but it's not their land.
Their land.
Right.
Yeah.
We get that out here, too.
Yeah. It's traumatic sometimes. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, thanks so much.
Thank you, Diane. Hey, next on the agenda, Stringer, simple subdivision, David Stringer, Orange Station Road and Keyway Run. Parcel number 005-02-01.4 and 01.6 preliminary plan.
There's supposed to be a file. For, for Keyway for five lots, I brought that over.
Come up and talk to us.
Hey, hey, Bob?
Yes.
Do you mind i- if I say a few words first?
Oh, go right ahead.
I just wanted to thank, thank the board for allowing me to, to join. I just wanted to thank the board for allowing me to join by Zoom tonight. Bob is representing me, because I am, uh, not in the state. And this is the first time that I've been in front of the board since, uh, approximately 009, and it is for the, the last section of Mallard Land that is in the town of Pompey, and it's at Section 16B.
So, these are the different phases.
This here, oh, yeah, you did two last one, one, three last and two, two last, yeah.
This is what was a-
Section four or three, now he's doing four over here. And he actually has the file dates right at it, too. Let me have your file. This is, just showing, this is Pompey, so you see the whole thing.
What is this?
That's the one that just presents four.
We got right here.
This is what we got last.
So I mean, we were prepared to look at it, lot line adjustment between two lots.
That's not what we're doing tonight?
Nope.
So this this.
And the one we mapped that you had was a lot line adjustment between two lots.
And that's not happening?
He just.
No, it's happening.
He just presented a four lot subdivision, five lot subdivision.
It's a. Preliminary plan.
It's totally.
There was some confusion.
Uh, okay.
So that's the one that they want.
So.
I brought all the maps for the two for this.
Right. It's just these that need to be signed.
Yeah.
As a as a lot line adjustment, which is fine, which are going to be.
We didn't understand what he was trying to do.
Yeah.
And I thought that's what we were talking about.
The lot line adjustment.
Subdivisional.
He's done all that. The maps are done.
Oh, that doesn't.
Yeah.
Right.
It doesn't need.
Okay, that's done.
This is this has been going on for a while. The the slot line adjustment was before. I guess we'll timeout. We'll timeout.
Right.
But right now, it's just got two separate pieces because I'm a customer.
But let's back up. So there was a lot line adjustment that came in a long time ago, but Steve and I looked at when we didn't have anybody that is ready for signature. That's what this is. It's it's done, but I see that's what got put on.
That's what got sent to us.
That's what got sent to you, not this. So where so now the question, all right, so if everyone can understand that, these he was just bringing tonight, kind of as an aside, because he was coming anyway. When I talked to Bob, I'm like, bring him to my office. He's like, I'm coming here tonight anyway. I'm like, great, Sue can sign them. So that got confused with this. So this is a lot line adjustment. You don't need to worry about that. It's already been approved. Steve and I looked at it a long time ago. It's all done.
Tonight is four fifty six, fifty seven, fifty eight, fifty nine, and sixty.
So apparently, yes, but I'm sorry, apparently you guys did not get that. I don't know, but you dropped it off to Nikki.
I dropped it off and I called to see if it had been. You seen this stuff because she was sick the week I brought it over.
Okay.
And then there was confusion and thinking what was coming over to the board. I was for sure it was this because that's what I dropped off.
No paperwork on it. Just the maps that we're looking at.
Well, we.
We don't need. I don't think you need any paperwork. Seeker's already been done.
Well, it's a so this is a final map.
Yes, because we have preliminary approval.
Appropriate approval, but we don't.
But this was all approved, right?
That was the original subdivision.
Which was approved.
That was approved.
Right. Out of copy. And and these five were on here and haven't changed.
Not at all. Not at all.
So this is, and I don't want to, I don't want to put anyone on the spot because I also, you know, haven't looked at it, but if if the if if we've been through this before, if it's the same as the
Original approval.
Original. Then they're here for final subdivision approval and the seeker's already been done. Then it's approvable as a final plot plan. The problem is nobody has for sure looked at the prelim. Unless we want to do.
It's fine now. I got a copy of it right there.
It's this.
That's bad. And Rose has been built all the utilities around.
Nothing. It's it's just not even. Yeah.
So it doesn't affect the configuration of any of these lots?
No, not at all. It was two lots that were.
Yes.
In a preliminary plan here.
It's in the same section.
Right.
But it's not the that lot line adjustments in the same section. It's just now.
To be compare the preliminary plan. You know, frontages are the same, lot sizes are the same.
One on top.
And is the road dedicated?
Absolutely.
It's there.
Yeah.
Fifty seven.
Yeah.
Fifty eight.
It's on.
Nine sixty.
So Jamie, if that's the case, do we do we need a motion or how does that?
Yeah, it would be.
Motion to approve.
Approve the final subdivision plan as presented dated X.
Whatever this date is.
Because it is in substantial conformity with the preliminary plan already filed. That would be the motion.
Okay, can you write that down so I can say it back to you?
Sure. But I, again, I can't, you, you're looking at it. I don't know. Does everyone else feel that way? Did everybody look?
It's exactly the same.
Yeah.
Definitely. No change. The.
My idea was.
Exactly the same.
I can believe him.
You didn't want to make any changes anyway. That would have required too much effort.
Yes. So basically, you're just combining two in one.
No, just. All we're doing is we're now taking five lots. On those five lots.
And so will this final, will this be the final five lots on Kitty Wake to be?
There'll only be two left. Our Kitty Wake will be all done.
Right.
And there'll only be the two back here. And and you and these.
So we're not approving those.
No, you're just on the road.
This is there's nothing else on Kitty Wake.
No, these, this, we got the map over here. These two are approved. These three are approved, and then those. That's these. Fifty fifty one, fifty two, fifty three. Those are all approved lots.
No. So this is.
Yeah, yeah, just. Yeah, because all the utilities are in, all the utilities are in.
It's all used to farm.
Yeah. Just one quick question.
Yes.
Those combination. There will still be.
These two. Okay, so these two are going to the property to the south. The answering. And then the only two last ones, they have two other chunks. We file. Orange Station Road. No, that's just. These two were joined together. They have a lot of step, crisscross, you know.
Because if you.
So these lots four, they don't have a driveway off of Orange Station.
Yeah, that's it. That was always the plan.
Okay.
Kind of simple, only because the. And everything involved in, but all in file.
What parcel is it actually?
Part of. Which was the other.
That would have been the light.
Lot one. It would have been that tax parcel. All right, what do you need? You ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion or ready?
Ready for a motion?
Already got it ready.
Go ahead.
He's going to make the motion. Make the motion that we approve the five lot subdivision on Kitty Wake Run based on the preliminary approval. Preliminary approval map from three two of oh of two thousand and four. And the map we are approving for final approval is
twenty twenty two.
April fifth of twenty twenty two. I need to view handing L S P C.
With the finding that the final map presented is in substantial conformity with the preliminary plan.
With the, what she said. That with the final map is in conformance with the preliminary map, which it seems substantially, we've reviewed both maps and it does look to be in compliance with the original map. Oh, sorry.
My apologies.
Better get a snow blower back out.
All right. Any further discussion here, non motionable?
Hi.
Hi. Your non motion passes.
Do you want to sign?
I ask a question, please. First of all, thank you. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. And I request that the board give the chairman the authority to to sign the final plans after they have Nondog County Health Department approval and the other necessary approvals.
The motion, but that's.
I think we just.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't understand what you were doing.
No.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Who motioned it?
Sue motion to adjourn. Kevin seconded the motion to adjourn.
Hi.
Hi.
Sue and Kevin.